7 o'clock, call the meeting to order. Roll call. Smiley. Here. Start.
Here.
Board here. Approval of minutes for the last meeting. So move it.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Number five, discussion of possible action regarding the appointments of District 1, 2, and 3 first deputies. District number one, Damian Starks. District 2, Gina Smith. And District 3, Dow Kimble.
And here's three.
Do you do them all three together like that?
If you want to, you can do them separately. You want to do it separately?
I'm good with it. All my commotion.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That one is no good. He's just wanting to make sure he gets good. So when he comes back, he doesn't go right back there.
That, same that we do not have mine. He's trying to send that back. Thank you.
What did we decide on number five? Do we have to do them separately together?
No, we just don't.
We're ready for number six?
All of us do it. I'm not, we're not. I'm just trying to hold on. I'm just trying to hold on.
I think I should sign out and talk to you. Are you in D3? All right. Then we'll get you the extension.
You good?
Yep.
Number six, discussion of possible action regarding the following requirements. Outbound electric cooperative at one.
Okay, so this one here, the one oh, is in D3, and eight twenty-three fourteen, and seventeen twenty-three fourteen, and it's $500 for natural gas.
And nineteen twenty-four?
Seventeen twenty-three fourteen, and eight twenty-three fourteen. And the other one's in D1. We need to do those separately.
On my commotion for the one oh. This is my area.
One second.
All in favor? That's this one?
Same agenda, just different public motion. We approve one. Price improvement for D1?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Outbound electric, and it's, there's no fee. And it's in D1.
Good there.
Yep.
Number seven, discussion of possible action regarding the renewal of survival flight memberships.
So each year, I've been doing this for, or we started last year with survival flight, and it's due this month. So I've got the list ready for them, and they send us the invoice and the contract. So we just need to sign that, and...
How much does that cost? Is that...
Let me sit down.
Do we just do survival flight?
No, we also do air mid. Survival flight, $60 per household. And so it comes to a total of $4,560. And county general pays $2,700 of it, D1 pays $660, D2 pays $540, and D3 pays $600.
And then we do the survival flight too, or the...
Air mid, yeah. But it's at a different time. It's like in October, we do that one.
About the same price?
Yeah. I think it's $65, not $60.
We just carry both of them that way. Happen to be, one can't do you when you need it, and you recover it if you have to use the other one.
Would you approve that?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
One second.
Aye. All in favor? Number eight, discussion of possible action regarding bid number FY24-25-03 courthouse camera system.
Sheriff, so that is, we were, we had discussed changing a few things up on it. The bid is still good. We're just changing the location of one electric lock to a different door. That changed the bid. So, and kind of find out, we may not even get the bid in the first place, but we're still checking on. He has a state contract for E-Rank for schools and libraries.
And that was the email I sent. Was it? Yes, because I checked with the auditors, and they said that doesn't work for counties.
Okay, so it doesn't, okay. So, but we're good to go on that if we approve it. All we're going to do is change, instead of the lock up in the atrium, it's going to go down here where employees come in a lot easier, and it doesn't change the bid at all.
That happens to only bid we go, isn't it?
Yeah.
Want to make the motion to approve that?
One second.
All in favor? Number nine, discussion of possible action regarding the regrid application for free recovery service.
So they are applying for rescue equipment in the amount of...
Is this the new ground and grants that they opened up last year?
Yes.
There's a lot of freedom.
There was about $285,000 of it left over that we kicked back to make more grants.
So they're asking for $32,060 for rescue tools.
So move it.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You know, it's on the check right there.
Number 10, discussion of possible action regarding the fiscal year 26 contract renewal between the Department of Corrections, Community Sentencing, Woods County. Explain that to me.
Okay, every year, we have a contract with them. This is really early for them to send out. In fact, they apologize. They said that they're on their end, the state end, they're wanting them done real early. Community sentencing, you have, there's a board that you guys also, somebody's on.
Well, nothing to do with the kids and stuff on them?
Yeah. We just tapped it. Do it each year.
So maybe I can say more in this little bit, court system.
Yes.
One second.
All in favor? Number 11, discussion of possible action regarding the use of the courthouse lawn for classic bowling.
So they're wanting to have a little concert out here on the lawn on May 30th, and they said it'd just be for like a two-hour use.
So move it.
One second.
All in favor? Number 12, discussion of possible action regarding interlocal cooperative agreement number 2024-8 for circuit engineering district number eight.
And it looks like you guys signed that, that's right. So I think we just sign it, make it official. You guys did it in your board.
Do you need a motion on that?
Yeah, I'll do it.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 13, discussion of possible action regarding the surplus and removal from inventory of backhoe forks ID number D322-004 that was sold to Bid2do on May 20th, 2019 with sealed bid number 18-19-13 with a John Deere backhoe ID number D312-032 for District 1.
And just forgot to get taken off then.
I'll make a motion.
One second.
All in favor? Number 14, discussion of possible action regarding surplus and junk transit ID number D355-011 for District 1.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
One second. All in favor?
Damien only to sign up here too. But otherwise, just both pages at the bottom.
All in favor?
Second. Two seconds.
Me first, I second. I'm the, I, I first, you second.
Two pages.
Number 15, discussion of possible action regarding the surplus and junk level ID number D355-001 and Apple laptop ID number D250-27 for District 1.
Want to make the motion to approve that?
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
And there's three pages here. Damien only to sign that first one up there. You know, it's, it's not that big. You don't mix that.
She's got red X.
Yeah.
Number 16, discussion of possible action regarding the surplus of a 1986 GMC pickup ID number D301-090 for D1.
Want to make the motion to approve that?
I'll second that.
And I'll do red spot there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 17, discussion of possible action regarding the surplus and junk computer ID number SF250-001 and post hole dagger ID number SF341-001 for the rebar.
Want to make the motion to approve that?
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
And Shane, it's on there too.
Yeah, I'm all right. My eyes, it's lights or something. Play, and this is color. Back her up. Good there.
Yep.
Number 18, discussion of possible action regarding the surplus and junked tank trailer ID number D348-012 and surplus only hogneal ID number D346-021.
What are we doing with them? Was it going down to that option?
More than likely, they're going to come videotape it. I think they already have it. He was there one day, and we were all out working it. And I assume whatever that brings will just light up.
Might have to pay them.
Do we have a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the tank trailer, is that ours?
It's, if that's code, it's a, it's just, it's, that would hold the oil.
Yeah, I've been around that thing a lot of times.
I've never seen it, actually. It's beautiful. I bet. I've got a cream that I bought. Number 19, discussion of possible action regarding removing Julie Parker and adding Don Cosic as requisition officer for District 3. I'll make that motion.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I've got a couple things on there.
Number 20, you did this.
Okay, so I've got two Pioneer telephone that came in, went out Friday afternoon, or well, it's like 11 o'clock, and couldn't have had it. But they needed to get this approved as soon as possible, if they could. And so I told them, well, I could have done a new business, and then if you guys want to run it back through, we can. But I mean, I think it's legal.
What is it, fiber optic stuff?
Yes.
So move it. Look quick.
Huh?
Yeah. Is there a call in motion?
Yes. Man, I don't want to hook that up. John, you second that, sorry.
Ron?
Yes, Sheriff.
You want to give us a, our new business, and that's for you?
Yeah.
Ron?
Just wanted to...
When I think it come up.
You did update, and I'll tell you what's going on, see if you have any questions, or if we need to be doing anything else. I think, I think the U and the contractor went out and pottled the school, and we found that that's, just like we expected, it's not great soil. So we'd already planned on digging out two feet and replacing it with good select film. That's in the contract. And it leads us to needing soil tests, and we have received three proposals to do that. And we've told standard testing to come out this week and drill some borings. They'll drill them 20 feet deep, and then also 10 feet deep in a parking lot there. And that'll tell us exactly what our bearing capacities are, and what we need to do to the soil for the foundations. I think that the contractor called construction, took the soil samples that you all got out over to standard testing, just to see, see what it was. And I think you also got some from your, from your farm office, that he was going to have that tested also, just to see what kind of stuff we can get on that. So that's going on, and we've got a good week to do the soils test, so we'll get it done this week. I think the, I told you before that y'all are quoting me, but the state is providing the, is supposed to provide kitchen equipment, and the county was providing the building to put in, and the connections and all that stuff. The hood that is a part of the kitchen equipment was provided in the, in your contract, in Woods County contract. I checked with the NIP to see if the state will provide that, and she thinks it will, so that that would result in a pretty good savings to you all, if the state does provide that. It'd be somewhere in 30 thousand dollars, upwards of 30,000. So we're expecting that, and I just wanted to let her have a chance to talk to her people to get the orders. I think, like I said, the doorwork and all that is going on right now here at Allen. And the home goods, they are starting to cut the floor flat today, and we'll be putting in plumbing before work. And that'll be going on this week. And the changes that people were wanting to make there, there's not been any funding change, so those changes, we can't include yet unless your whole town's different. I think there was some question about the kitchen bigger, more electrical in the kitchen, and a few other things that they requested. One of the items that they requested was flooring throughout the, because right now we have a concrete slab. And when we're finished, it'll be a concrete slab, and you'll see all the overcuts. And one thing I'd like you to think about, and I'm not asking for a decision or anything, we have $5,000 set aside to go towards ceiling of the concrete slab. And that $5,000 would make pretty good bid, and something like LVT flooring. And if you'd like, we can give a price to that, and tell you what the difference would be to have a finished floor. And I think it was held back because of the funding, because it just wasn't, but $5,000 would make pretty good payment.
What is it, LVT?
I'm sorry, luxury vinyl tile is what it's called. It's just a vinyl tile. We usually get a plank type, but it can be glued up or applied.
Is it glued down, or just floating?
It can be either way. I like to glue it myself. I don't like to fill it with glue. I can like it on the wall. But it's a thin material, and it's not a real expensive material. And of course, there's all different grades.
Is it very durable material?
Oh, yeah, it's very durable. You've never had to wax it. And that's one reason everybody's going to, all schools especially, going to, because you don't have to wax it. Pretty good product. It, I think vinyl tile, the 12-to-12 vinyl tile is pretty much a thing of the past. It's very hard to get, and it's stuff that you have to continually wax. I think that I should be, I'm waiting on you to give me the answer on the equipment, the hood, and as soon as she does that, then we can present a change order to you for a bid. So we're in good shape. Everything's going like it should. All the submetals are starting to come in, all the subcontractors information, all of their shop trucks. So everything's going well, so if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
We're down there, we started taking the chain link off, off that framework down there, and cut that fence down today.
Oh, chalked up? Oh, good, good.
Hopefully, OG and you were supposed to get out end of last week, and they didn't take the power down, it's one of them light bulbs. It's not got power to it, but there's still one that's attached to our pole that needs to come off. Get that down, and we can pull this out, lights out. Are we for sure on the two foot coming out, or is that going to be questionable yet?
I want to, I want to get the borings first. And, yeah, I'm pretty sure it's going to be two feet, maybe a little more, because some of our solid will go potted it. But there are things we can do to, to avoid the two feet, like blending or something like that. We'll analyze it based on what the soil tests is, and make a recommendation.
Can we go ahead and start taking the grass off?
Yes. I'd love it if you go ahead and scarify it, but you've got some grain marks out there.
Yes.
And we don't want to lose those.
Right.
We need to keep those, let's scarifying it and doing what you need to do. That's, yeah, you can start that anytime, especially when you've got the weather. Because immediately after we get the soils information, then we'll send that to, we'll send that to you at the determination to continue working on soils. The two critical things on soils test is the, the check under select film for your borrow pin, and then the borings, what they find there on public capacities.
23 feet deep, huh? It's accurate, what people are thought.
We typically do that because you just don't, you just don't know, you don't know what's there. Sometimes you might be on a, on a, an old landfill. And that's happened to people before. So we want to make sure that there's enough, no surprises. Al's got a high water table that sometimes moves, and we want to know if it's there. That's why it's...
Do you need some pothold in there?
Yeah, the soil looks pretty consistent for that first full fill. And then it gets sandy. Now, the soil on top looks like a real good dirt. I'm surprised it doesn't make, I won't make...
Well, it's compaction. I was afraid it had a lot of, a lot of clay in the hot BI, but if it's, and from what y'all saw, it's mostly sand, but is it compactable sand? If it's not, then you really change it out to select fill, or blend it to make it better.
What's correct? Quality shit, we know it will pack, you know?
Don't see any issues. Everything's kind of the way it's supposed to be, except we're kind of up in the neighborhood of the food service. In a previous change order, we took all the other stuff out, just so we could do it right. There was, I think there were a couple people who called me wanting to, if you don't, John, wanting to add things to the building in La Noca, wanting to make some changes. Of course, anything they do has to go through you all, but anything they do has to be paid for also. Where we were going the other direction with the change order, they want to go the other direction, have to. And we would too, we'd love to see it, but so far, they've all found it. So we're continuing up, and further we go, the more expensive changes we count. But we're not holding up unless you tell us. but we're not holding out unless you tell us. At this point, everything's good?
It's okay.
Do you guys want to get hearing numbers, having checked to see what the boring looked around?
I can, sure, we'll check the LVT, because we're really up here trenching and putting it in the sewer line, it's really going bad. It's going bad, and no one will ever be happy, they'll walk in on finish day and be very unhappy with that. But a couple of things they've asked for is a bigger kitchen, bigger cabinets, more storage, more power for their freezers and things like that, and space wise, it's adequate, it's got good space, they did want to get those other storage buildings, storage yent rooms, they want us to go ahead and take the walls out of that, make a bigger room to use, and of course, we can't afford to do that without, so it's kind of staying the way it is, and the kitchen's staying the way that it's, it's changed too. That's about all I've got.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
I got a couple of questions, underneath business, the stock shows this week, did we do anything for that? Has anybody asked us to do anything for that? Part of that, or...
The stock shows...
Four-H stuff?
Yeah. They're fully handled through.
I mean, they do it.
Manager, so, I mean, I mean, we do, I mean, he'll be helping getting ready.
They'll do the districts or something here, you know, they have one on that probably was Freedom on Almond, and they did districts, and then they built, just take it or something up there, or something like that, I think it'd be local county or district.
Yeah. But I'm pretty sure Jason knows what all he's doing, so I'm sure he's...
I know he's worried.
I mean, he hadn't called and said there's been issues yet, so hopefully, but I think they're...
Well, Jason called me this weekend, Embry, I guess they're having problems getting some of the bedding material, and he's looking to borrow one of our onesons to get over heated and pick some up, which I told him to borrow, so I kind of expect to hear from the guy for sometime first this week and get one time.
If you hear something, we'll do it, we'll help, whatever we can do. My other question is, I got a little tough trailer too.
I think it's out.
She'll, I'm gonna sell. Jean has some papers that we have to fit.
Oh, yeah.
Those have to go through this meeting? Do you guys know? There's a form after the surplus, something that we have to mark, how we're getting rid of it?
Oh, yes, those do have to go through, uh-huh, and we'll put those on after, after the auction.
Yeah, after they sell it.
After the auction, that way we know how much each piece of equipment brought and who bought it, and his...
Final destination and stuff.
And they'll send her, they'll send us the information and then we'll put it on a normal line through.
Were you going to try and just seal them, any of your stuff through here?
Yes. The cheaper stuff that's probably not going to sell, get it auctioned, we're just going to seal with that and put it down there.
Eighty-six GMC surplus, that I'd like it to go out and seal it here.
You got, you're going to take stuff down there to the CED?
Yeah.
Do they charge it a percent, eight percent?
No, no problem.
The two percent comes back to our local CED.
That way she can get all the information she has.
Probably.
It's a better job for you, you know?
Yeah.
This is another form that needs to be signed for that auction.
You got some stuff in good down there. Any other new business? Sure.
Oh, thanks, sir.
Ready?
Number twenty-one, approve, disapprove, blame purchasers.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number twenty-two, most of your journal resists or read me.
Okay. One second.
Are we going to adjourn?